Is it working?
I think you got it. Okay, over to you and we have about fifteen minutes.
Great, thank you, everybody. It's good to be here. I'm here to give you the first report on behalf of the Community Safety and Wellbeing Committee. We started meeting in August of last year and here we are. Our committee is comprised of, you just go to slide number three. You guys don't need to see the outline. There it is. Slide number three is comprised of a variety of local organizations, a few members at large, including RCMP staff, some town staff. So it's a very well-rounded group of people, a lot of different organizational input. And certainly, you know, while many of us feel we really want to get something done when it comes to community safety and wellbeing, this group of people is passionate. They're hungry to see some real positive change, but they're committed to walking through a process. And I just want to say thank you to all the members who are a part of that great team. Certainly, we have to navigate some passionate people around many different perspectives on how community safety and wellbeing is accomplished. But I think we're all committed to the process and I'm very grateful for this group of people. Now, the mandate that we've been received is really explore, evaluate, and recommend council policies, programs, and initiatives aimed at reducing crime and fostering a sense of safety in the community. Those two things are very challenging to navigate and we have to hold those things together as we process as a group. The things that you articulated for us as a committee, next slide, are four goals and objectives, and this is just kind of giving you a progress report of where we're at. One, identifying key challenges and opportunities related to community safety and crime reduction. So the update, we have a list generated. We've engaged underway with agencies in the community and broad community engagement is needed. So that's the next step for us that we want to follow up with. You've asked us to assess the effectiveness of existing policies and programs in promoting safety and wellbeing. This is underway through engagement with the community members and guest presenters. Number three, engaged. Whoops. Engage with relevant stakeholders, including community members, law enforcement, businesses, healthcare professionals, and local government officials. So we have a list of organizations that we've identified, that we've worked through and identified who we want to talk to, prioritize those. We've engaged with the RCMP and community services. Community member engagement is still needed. Get the picture, community engagement is still needed. Number four is development pros actionable recommendations to council regarding crime reduction and community safety. So we have some things that we're working on. We have an initial list generated. We're currently underway through agency presentations to gather more of that information. Now, if you want to see this in a linear path, which I just let you know right now, we're not operating linearly at all. You know, linear means we start at one point, we go to a goal at the end point. We're actually simultaneously building this out as we go. It's like we're building an airplane in the air. So we've initiated the plan. We've got key challenges identified, opportunities related. We've started and identified the stakeholders and engaging them. But additionally, as we're doing that, we're actually coming up with a list of draft recommendations. So these things are happening as we go. And if you take a note there, that little hourglass at the bottom, it's a total of nine hours, not eight, spent together as a committee. So over the last year, we've met this many times and this is what we've come up with so far together. I think it's actually a great thought when you think of a group of people coming together and accomplishing this so far is fantastic. So one of the things that we really want to try and do is to slow the process down. What we want to do in slowing the process down is we avoid making reactive decisions and throwing reaction into the decision-making process. Slow it down, it allows us to hear community needs and respond accordingly so we can come up with really good long-term plans down the road. So we're not playing ping pong back and forth with whatever the latest issue is. We're going, how do we actually grapple with this whole concept of community safety and wellbeing? So we're coordinating with agencies. We've had great discussions with RCMP. As you've just seen, this conversation is ongoing and certainly grateful to the RCMP for being regular parts of our conversation and helping give us input on the elements of their commitment to crime reduction. Of course, right at the very beginning of this process, we were brought in saying, okay, you are the committee for community safety and wellbeing. And the first meeting, it came up, what even is that? And we had a group of ten-plus people sitting in a room all with an idea of this is what community and safety wellbeing is. And we recognize that there's a divergence. Everybody has a different perspective and a different idea of what that is. So to give you a quick idea, next slide. Community wellbeing is a combination of traditional, social, cultural, economic, environmental, and political conditions that people and their communities consider essential for their health. Some attributes that play a role are connectedness, livability, and equity. So how do we define this in a room full of passionate people with different perspectives and different ideas on how this is going to get done? So a framework of understanding is a great way to start. Next slide. A community wellbeing framework is a structured approach to improving the overall quality of life for residents by addressing key social, economic, environmental, and safety factors. It serves as a guide for decision-making, ensuring that policies, programs, and initiatives prioritize the holistic wellbeing of individuals and the community. These frameworks often include elements like access to basic needs, public safety, mental health support, social inclusion, and economic stability. So in the context of a committee, this framework could help us take shape and as a set of guiding principles for an ongoing formation of community and safety and wellbeing. It becomes integrated into planning. It becomes part of policy development and it becomes part of service delivery. That key element allows us to begin to see it not just as a felt sense because right now our community doesn't feel safe, what we're hearing from people, so I don't feel safe. And we actually mean to go, okay, how do we actually address that? And it show people, this is how we're taking care of that and address it. So rather than beg, borrow, or steal from other communities who are in this process, we felt that our best effort would be to put forward was to work ourselves through a needs-based analysis that would give us insight into a greater framework for wellbeing. So we worked through a whole bunch of things. That's the one right there. This needs-based analysis identified a variety of key areas. There's a comprehensive list in that diagram. I don't know if you can see all of them, but we can make that available too if you'd like to follow through with it. But things came up like affordable living and housing, mental health supports, senior supports, community belonging, crime prevention, accessibility, access to healthcare, economic growth, and safety by environmental design. We had to ask ourselves, what criteria determines whether a community is thriving, safe, and healthy? So in that process, we put all these needs onto a board and we said, what sits behind that? And we identified five key areas. Social, economic, environmental, healthcare, and public safety. And this begins to help us establish a framework of how do we assess whether things are working or not in our community. If you look in the middle of that diagram, it's where all of those things meet together. Consequently, or anecdotally, you can see some of those colored stickers in some of those areas. Those are areas where people highly prioritize those needs. Things like temporary housing, youth supports. Those are all sitting right in the middle of that framework. So as a committee, we sat down, I went, this is a good starting place. We don't have a sense that this may be comprehensive, but it's a good place for us to say, hey, we have a hunch that this might be a framework for us to begin with. But what we need to do is we need the community to tell us if there's anything that we're missing. Is there anything that we're not seeing? Is there anything that might be need to be addressed in the framework so that we can add it and make adjustments? Next slide. So common challenges that we've identified. We have this thing called resource limitation. Anybody know about that? Many organizations do not have the financial or human resource capacity to manage the growing expectations and various levels of government and communities hindering our ability to focus solely on community safety and wellbeing. We're all stretched very thin. We're doing the best that we can. We're leaning together towards these things, but we have a lot of limitations. We have competing priorities. Effective community partnerships require time to establish and grow. Addressing systemic issues requires significant investment by all parties. I sat in a meeting last year at this time and the person who was facilitating asked, how many people have been in one of these meetings before? And three people raised their hand. And I had been in the previous meeting four years earlier and recognized that all the people in that room had either swapped out or knew in their positions and in their places of leadership. And I went, oh, we have a lot of work to continually tend the garden of what we have organizationally in this community to make sure we're all working together and on the same page. And a significant thing that we've discovered through our process is there's a lack of awareness of what's going on in our community. There's a lot of good work being done and people just don't know. So programs, support systems that are in place, and people are completely unaware of it. I really appreciate and I commend the RCMP for the work that they're doing in their reporting. That's called education and it's letting the community see the work that's being done in terms of crime prevention, crime reduction in our area. And it's really helpful giving people an awareness of what's happening. This needs to happen on a larger scale on so many levels. Next slide. Community needs, these are the things that we've are seeing. And how do we move forward? We need to understand and recognize the unique needs of rural community. Smithers is a center for a larger area. So we can't just think about Smithers. We have to think beyond and how can we support the rural area around us? It takes strategies to help us effectively do that. Our engagement strategies are something that we need to do. We need residents to gather and tell us and give us valuable insights to make our next steps clearer. We need to identify key areas for improvement, addressing community needs effectively and fostering wellbeing. And what we're looking for, folks, is evidence-based data, not just ideas. We're looking for great ways that we can take evidence and move that to the place into a strategy and help us move forward. Am I getting to the last slide yet? Some questions that we've asked. How do we assess and improve community safety and wellbeing against all local projects and programs? Think about that. Anytime we launch something, are we thinking about community safety and wellbeing? Architectural design, urban planning, policy development, social support programs, community policing, and more. Is this through the development of a Smithers community safety and wellbeing plan or framework? Maybe you're getting a hint, there might be a recommendation coming along those lines. Some priority areas that we've identified initially, prevention programs. Has anybody here heard of SEPTED? Give me a wave. Okay, fantastic. This is something our community doesn't know about. Crime prevention through environmental design. And it's something that we can equip people in our communities that will really help if we do the education side of that. Public education to reduce misinformation. Youth supports, thank you for your advocacy, Town Council, for what you're doing for the foundry work. We have to be looking upstream in order to make these changes. Shelter space. And last thing I really want to say is the way that we attack community safety and wellbeing is we have to think about pilot projects. Let's try things. I want to commend the safety officer, the RCMP and Town Council for taking the approach across the street here and saying, hey, let's try something different. I think it's fantastic because it's outside the box and it allows us to go, let's gather data on this and see actually how it helps us. And I just want to encourage you, there's probably half a dozen more pilot projects that we can do in this community for community safety and wellbeing. And we don't have to, you don't have to be successful. They just have to be things that can give us data and help us learn. So this list will be refined and grow through our engagement process. And we're committed to really seeing our initial thoughts be brought forward to the rest of the community so that we can grow and deepen our understanding. I think that's all I have. There's that fancy slide again. Next one. Questions?
Thanks, Mark. For nothing else, your enthusiasm and clarity. So appreciate that. Thank you. Council, if there's questions. Counselor Ray.
Does the committee have any sense of timeline for where we're going to see recommendations that can be actioned? As you know, there's a municipal election coming up next October. And my concern is that we're going to get the recommendations in September and everything's going to fall apart. So can you comment on that at all?
Yeah, I would say we're probably working on right now a recommendation that's going to come to you for a decision around the public engagement component of it. So it's not necessarily a recommendation for this is what you need to do, but we do need to actually gather more data so that we can give you the information that you need to make those decisions. If the council would like, we can put some initial recommendations together, but we really look to you for some direction on that.
Good, Counselor Ray. Counselor Buchaman and then Counselor Patterson.
No questions, but I just want to say I really appreciate the progress report. It's just good to know what the committee has been busy with. Thank you.
Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Hello, Mark. Sam, do you mind just going back to one slide for me just in the process? Mark, would it be okay if you just expanded a little bit on what you're thinking around the recommendation? Or permit what the committee is thinking around the recommendation around engagement? Just similar to the comment that you just made to Counselor Ray.
Yeah, I mean, really, we have kind of established our hypotheses as a committee. So this is what we think we'd like to do, but really, we need the community now, whether it's through the town staff to ask them to help us with an engagement strategy, not looking to inform the community, but to actually consult with the community and ask them for their input on what are some of the key things that they see and what they may see as some of their key steps going forward. Does that answer your question?
Any other questions? Okay. I was only one sort of concern I have, and it's not about the work of the committee. It's a concern in general. And you said something about how Smithers is a hub and I agree that that's true. And one of the challenges I think that we'll face at this table is being the main hub that's, you know, perhaps not wanting to drive everything. How do we, you know, as you're thinking back at the table, how do we ensure that others are joining us? And I was looking at the list. I do remember that there are others as well that are sitting at the Community Safety Committee. But it's a challenge for us as a small community. When I heard the enthusiasm with which you're saying the things that we need to do and that we are small. And so I'll just reflect that back for the committee to consider as well, the committee and the community. So as we take on these challenges, how do we gather the human resources to delve into the conversation so that it's going to have meaning just outside Smithers? You referenced the rural community. How do we gather them as well? So just some thoughts that occurred to me as you were presenting.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, thank you for your time. Oh, Counselor Ray.
I actually have a concern about public consultation and that is more around, you know, I was expecting more of a... And this isn't a criticism of this. I think your point of ten people not understanding what community health or not coming to a huge agreement, that was a problem around this table informing this committee. My concern is to, when we're going out to the public, to keep it a little more focused on what the town can do. I get that there's a framework, but this council can only control the actions of the staff of the town. So we can, you know, like we definitely asked about foundry at EBCM, but we can't actually control that until somebody decides to do it, then there's some action. So it's just how to, how to make sure that our public engagement doesn't come with a bunch of kind of pie in the sky stuff and it's more focused on what we can actually do.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Just in a response to that, I think one of the most significant elements as a council that you can do is your advocacy. Right? On a broad scale is continually being in the face of key decision-makers and saying, hey, we need to do something here, we need to accomplish something here. We need to bring in some kind of a way of funding because we're a central hub and we need these outerlying areas to somehow support this. Your advocacy is probably one of the strongest tools that you have. And I would encourage you to leverage that to the best of your ability. Of course, the challenge in any public engagement is there's the things that you ask and there's people that are going to give you that information that they want to give you anyways, right? And so my hope is that in an engagement strategy, we have room for that extra data. But really, the primary data we're looking for is actionable items that we can present to council moving forward.
Thanks. I appreciate that that's your understanding and the committee and thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to echo that. I mean, that certainly is the issue that we have to focus on. Whatever, under that broad banner of community safety, it takes up space in this organization for sure. So I probably, each of us would have a different story to tell you. But, you know, I take your last comments on advocacy, that is our job. We try to do that. And yeah, however, we're able to work with you. Counselor Patterson is the connection from council to the table. And we'll all reflect on what you've presented tonight as well and try to figure out how do we, how do we find, you know, for our sake, some tangible steps forward and then still maintain enough of an open mind to allow for the conversation that you've presented, you know, for us to consider. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and thank you. We wouldn't be here in this conversation if you didn't have the foresight to see that we need to have conversations about community safety and wellbeing. And this is something that's being shaped across Canada right now in these conversations. So you're on the bleeding edge of it. It's blurry, but it's good work. And I just want to thank you for stepping in to do that work. And we're with you in that work, doing the best that we can as a group of volunteers, one hour a month and extra, right? To see how we can help shape that process going forward. So thank you again for your efforts and your decision-making and your leadership.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks for being here. Enjoy the rest of your evening. All right, let me get us back to the agenda. So the next period, the next item rather, is the public comment period. So if there's someone that wants to speak to an item, I'm going to invite you to the delegation table. You have three minutes. Mr. Schroeder helps keep track. And I'll just invite you to, as well as you start, if you could identify the item, either by number or name, so that we're able to connect with what you're discussing. Okay, welcome. And for the clerk, actually, you've got it already. Okay. Just the introductions, but Ms. McKinley's got it. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us speak. We are here tonight to discuss the Notice of Development Variants Permit Application, DV twenty-five dash zero five for thirty-eight, thirty-five, Third Avenue. This just kind of came to me late, so I appreciate getting a moment to speak about it. I think we have a couple...
Sorry, I am going to interrupt, even though Ms. McKinley has it. Could you introduce yourself for the council table? Sorry about that.
I'm Karina Brewer. This is my husband, Martin Kous. We own La Petite Spa on Second Avenue. So I guess everybody has seen the map for this. Thirty-eight, thirty-five, the proposed development that he's wanting to do is directly behind the spa. We have a few concerns in regards to this. I will probably let my husband speak more to what the type of work is because it's definitely more his department. My personal main concerns are the noise that this type of business will produce in a very small area behind the spa. And the traffic that will also be produced in a very small, tight area already. Like I've been in that space now for seven years and it has always been a tight area because that shed that was there previously was a carport, like the person parked the vehicle there. And it was always very tight when that door, that automatic door would open and it kind of created a bit of a cluster back there. Also Jade Safety is beside me, they're not here tonight. But I know they use that back entrance as their main entrance. And that is directly like that, that space sits right in between Jade Safety's door and my door essentially on the back. So that's like, there's a lot of foot traffic that happens back there. There is a lot of vehicles that already traverse that area to begin with. So I'm really concerned about the fact that he's planning to have a retail space and a garage. And not only that, like the size of the building because his hope is to put it right up against the edge of the property line, which essentially is what I think from my building to that edge of that line is maybe twelve feet, twelve, not even. Yeah, so those are primarily my concerns. I will let my husband go ahead and speak as to the type of business it is. But yeah, those are the start of our concerns.
Thank you for listening. So the main concern is the noise coming from an outdoor equipment or... So the home-based business is going to be involved, consignment and repair of outdoor equipment. And it's very vague as to what kind of outdoor equipment he is going to be repairing. That could be anywhere from a chainsaw to a sled. And I'm sure everybody here is familiar with how noisy a two-stroke engine is. And having something like that operating in the middle of town would not only be disruptive to our business with the very quiet space that we need to perform our services, but also to the brewery that has just invested lots of money into their public space along with all the many residents that live in and around that area, right? To have two-stroke engines running, being tested, calibrated, all that kind of stuff. I am a red seal mechanic, so I do understand what's all involved in that kind of work. And I just can't see that being a good decision to have that in the middle of town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think just to summarize, for us primarily inside the business, as you know, many of you know, it is kind of the quiet sanctuary, a quiet area. We already do kind of make efforts to have the closed-room private services, which do require quiet and at the back of the building. We've already kind of changed the layout in the building so that those spaces are in the back away from the main traffic of the front part of the spa. So the idea now that I'm going to have this noise directly out behind the private room areas. So now I'm feeling like it might impact my own business in a negative way that I would potentially lose business because people are like, there's nothing relaxing about hearing an engine revving up during a massage. So that's primarily my concern with that. And just the safety, primarily because there is a certain type of people who tend to want to steal tools and those kinds of things from that nature of business that would be things stored there. There's going to be equipment stored there, there's vehicles stored there. There's, you know, given the nature of what he's hoping to do. So already, like, we have security cameras out the back there now because there have been some ongoing issues. So the idea that now there's going to be another draw that could potentially have people there stealing, it's just a little unsettling in general, so.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Appreciate you coming. And the item is on the agenda for later, so you're welcome to stay or take your evening back on view online, whatever works for you. But you're welcome to stay in the meeting if you choose. Thank you. Okay, I see someone rising. Come on forward. I think you've also done this before, so just the button there. If you don't mind introducing yourself and Mr. Schroeder will run the clock.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's Sally Harvey. I'm here to just express my support. I had it all lined up for the staffs. I had it all lined up for the staffs. I think it's fourteen point ten for the staff's recommendation to. Have an active transportation plan and grant. So to just update the active transportation grant. I know that's being recommended by staff later and I just wanted to come here to express my support for that as well. My, yeah, as I said, my name's Sally Harvey. I'm a physician here and so is my husband. We moved to Smithers about four years ago from Ontario. And this is sort of cheesy, but like we really, you know, we could, he's a psychiatrist and I'm a radiologist and and we could have really worked anywhere in B C. And there's a number of reasons that we wanted to come to Smithers, but one is this was the cheesy video of Taylor Backrack. Riding his bike down the street waving like at the sausage factory guy. I don't know if you've seen it, but. It's one of the things that we found when we were looking at. Reasons to move to Smithers. And so I thought, yeah, we were, we've always been an active. We've always been involved with active transport. We've walked and ridden our bikes everywhere for our whole lives and. And so unfortunately, and I understand that the current active transfer plan has led to a lot of really great. Great initiatives that have followed through. But I don't feel as chill as Taylor looks when I ride my bike downtown. I really don't, I have to really have my wits about me. And I've been doing this my whole life, so I mostly ride my bike from, I live right downtown and I ride my bike to the hospital as as much as I can and through the winter. And then I do all my errands and I just, I feel like I don't feel safe. Like I feel like there's. There's cars deken out everywhere at all those four way stops. I feel even when I'm driving that I. I'm nervous I'm going to run into someone. It's a, it's becoming very busy. And you know, I'm I'm an experienced active transporter, but there's a lot of kids and families out there trying to do the same thing. And so. I really commend staff for bringing this up for renewal and I'm hoping that there'll be an opportunity for public. Engagement for that process. So thanks very much for your time and. Those were just my comments.
Thanks, Sally. Okay, if there's anyone else who wants to speak to an item that is on the agenda. Okay, I'm gonna move on. Okay, if you wanted to speak to an item on the agenda. So the same then, if you're going to identify the item and just introduce yourself for the clerk. Is that on our agenda? Oh, the cold weather plan, okay.
On the agenda, you have the contract for the warming.
Yep, you're right.
One of the things I noticed.
If you don't mind, just the introduction for the clerks, if you can.
No, I'm not, although some may disagree with that, but. A bully. Last time we had a warming shelter, one of the conditions were you weren't allowed to sleep in it. That creates a problem with sleep deprivation. Goes to psychosis when drugs are involved and it creates a community safety issue. So that's it. That's all I have to say on this issue. Right? And I will call you on it if it happens again. So just so you know.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Okay, last call. Okay, council, then we're going to move to. We're gonna move to the minutes, minutes of September ninth, regular minutes for adoption, please. Counsel Elliot, Counsel Raven, any errors or omissions? All in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie and. Eight to committee of the whole from September sixteenth for adoption, please. Counselor Raven, Counsel Elliot, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Okay, and there, do I have this right? These two motions we're going to deal with now? Yep, okay, two motions then. The first one is on page three of five sixty five of five six. From the committee of the whole regarding reapplication of childcare B C. It's on the Counsel Raven. You're moving, Counsel Elliot, you're seconding. Okay, so that will be that council direct staff to reapply to childcare B C new spaces fund program. When the next application intake is open. Discussion. Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries with Counselors Ray and Leonard opposed. And next page and rate a second recommendation. That the motion would be that council approve option one with access from Sixteenth Avenue is the location for the proposed childcare facility. Counsel Raven moves, Counsel Elliot seconds. Discussion, Counsel Ray.
Just in case people weren't watching, like, maybe the whole, I'm opposed to this because it's in the park. I do think option one's better, but I'm still going to vote against it.
Any other comments? I'm I'm just gonna add that this is real tearing, so. I actually would really love us to find another location altogether, which was also part of the committee of the whole. I think I'm just gonna say for the record here, while I can support this. I urge us as a community to identify other locations. We have ways of doing that. It is my understanding still. That if we actually get through this, we are able to still look for alternative locations. I'm just gonna put that on the record as well. Okay, last call. All in favor? And opposed? Counsel Ray is opposed. The motion passes. Thanks, folks. Okay, I don't think we have anything under item nine. Then we are going to move to council reports, Council Buca Ma.
Thanks, Mayor Autrow. First of all, there is a visitor center report that's there really just for information. Kind of. Reinforces what we're hearing in the news that a lot of domestic tourism happened this summer, Canadian stayed home. And then I also just want to express my appreciation for the opportunity I had to attend U B C M. I feel like it was just a great week of learning and interacting with each other. And I also really appreciated the opportunity to meet with cabinet ministers. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Buca Ma. Counsel Elliot.
Thank you, Mayor. I too had the honor of attending U B C M. It was really great conference. And now segue right into my library report to the fact. Of that the lack of library funding was a hot topic of discussion there. And I just jotted some numbers down, reading this a few days ago. At the. In two thousand nine, library funding was seventeen million in the province. The next year is reduced to fourteen million and now it's been stuck there since that time, so. Just, you can see the library report attached. They do a lot of great things at the library, a lot of programs. We may see some of these things going away if there's no budget and no funding, so that would be a very sad day for us, so. Again, if there's anyone listening, please do what you can to advocate. Talk to your M L A or your provincial representative to advocate for the library, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Elliot. Counsel Leonard.
I think Counsel Ray had a question.
Oh, my apologies, Counsel Ray.
It wasn't really a question. It was just more that the premier did say in his speech, not this year, maybe later, but that's probably not a great. And I was actually, I attended the same session that the libraries put on. And I was flabbergasted that eighteen million covered the provincial funding for all the libraries in B C. That just. When I think of some other things that are getting money spent on in the World Cup for one. The amount of money that's spent on that versus, you know, one time event versus libraries. It's just kind of stunning.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Counsel Leonard.
Included in your package is are the minutes from the Minerals North Organizing Committee from the meeting September second. Just for your information. I also had the opportunity to attend U B C M with my fellow counselors. I always enjoy it. It's just a great opportunity and I'm thankful for that. Had a meeting last week with. Director Finance, Mr. Walsh, just to go over the the budget process. Just prior to Counselor Buca Ma, so. And then last week, also participated in the annual business walk on October ninth. That was my first year. Was a lot of fun. Actually, it was nice to collaborate and just talk to. Individual business owners about what's happening. So hopefully I can do it next year, too. And I just want to shout out that the A G M for the museum is next Tuesday at four thirty. At the old church, so come on out. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Leonard. Any questions for Counsel Leonard? Okay, then Counsel Patterson.
I thank you, your worship. So I also had the pleasure of attending U B C M this year. And also got to do the business walk and just a shout out to businesses who already submitted. I think we had a significant amount of responses thus far. And then there's minutes for information from the select committee on community safety and wellbeing and happy to answer any questions. And just thank you to our chair, Mark Duhuk, who gave a presentation this evening. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Patterson. Any questions for Counsel Patterson? Alrighty, excuse me. Counsel Raven.
So to echo what everyone else said, U B C M was fantastic and it just speaks to what the delegation said earlier is that's really our opportunity to advocate. So. Getting the chance to chat with cabinet ministers as well as the premier was just really, really good. I attended truth and reconciliation day events, so the Desa Camp Friendship Center, they actually did. Four different events over four days, which I appreciated just because some people might not get the chance to go on. The actual date, so this way it gave a lot more opportunity. The other thing is that there is an art gallery opening for the Skeena Saman Art Show this Friday. And then there's also some bolded motions from the accessibility advisory committee. And this was a meeting while U B C M was on, so I'm not familiar with the background on the bolded motion.
Thanks, Counsel Raymond. They'll come up later anyway, so you can handle them there. All right, any questions for Counsel Raven?
Counsel Ray. Sorry, I don't think the advisory committee ones, the accessibility ones come up later. It's just the.
I'm reading the wrong one. You're you're exactly right. Thanks for the correction.
So refer to staff or we chat about it?
Your call, we've got them there for information, so there's nothing that we need to do about.
Yeah, no, so if they miss any questions, we'll have to refer to staff then.
Alrighty. Counsel Ray.
Sorry, were we not doing those recommendations?
The.
Accessibility Advisory Committee.
They are there. If you want to do them, we don't have to. So counsel, what's your pleasure? We can receive them for information, so there's a lot in there. I'm not sure those are things we want to do now. It's it's up to you. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Maybe I'll go back to Counsel Raven.
Would it be helpful to go through one by one and see if there is interest in pursuing any of these?
Two two people at the same time, Counsel Raven, please.
If it would be helpful, we could go through them one by one. And if there is an interest in pursuing any of them, then we can go from there.
Sure, and then perhaps I'll just look to staff as well. If there's something, I'll try to keep my eyes open, but if you wanted to interject at some point, let's do it that way. So Counsel Raven. You can guide us through and I'll look to staff for clarity.
All right, so the first recommendation is on page two of six or ninety two of two or five eighty six. Which is that the accessibility advisory committee recommend that council direct staff. To conduct a community survey for a broader perspective of feedback on sidewalk accessibility regarding stamped concrete versus red brick. Or using an alternative smooth product slash method.
All right, I'm not seeing hands. I'm just gonna chime in on on these recommendations in general, just that there's a lot in them and I think. We're going to need to hear from staff unless we want to have a complete direction on how things are done. So my my perspective, I'll just put on the table, is that we receive these minutes. There's there's a lot, I think, my my opinion. In that having a committee. Ask us to direct staff to look for all that broader feat feedback on the way we do things is quite a big statement. So personally, I'm not there at this point, so it's not something I'd support, but counsel. So Counsel Ray and Counsel Patterson.
So the first two, if counsel were to make it, we're directing operational items. I think staff seeing them, if they wish to respond to the committee, I think that's important and I and I I. I get the concern, you know, with no council members there to kind of point that out. I I get why they're asking for some of these things, but they are operational items.
Counsel Patterson.
Thank you, your worship. Just testing the waters a bit to see, because I I really want to be respectful of the committee that they've obviously taken the time to provide recommendations, but. That it would take significant time to even consider. Next step, would it be appropriate to refer it to the select committee on strategic priorities for consideration or discussion on a later date?
A motion's always in order, but maybe before you make the motion, we could test the waters around the table. I see Counsel Ray as well, but. I think my my personal opinion is right now, I'd like to just let this be, but Counsel Ray.
Well, just regarding like the sidewalk accessibility that we're going to probably award. An active transportation plan, then maybe that's something that could be in it. But that can come as part of the public process as well.
There's anyone, Counsel Patterson, and then I guess some either Mr. Allen or Ms. Chandler, and if there was something you wanted to add or Mr. Doer, I see you leaning in, so. I I just feel like this, like these these particular recommendations, if we accept them and direct staff to do them, are quite a big shift. And so at this point, with the amount of things that we have on the go. We're hearing the information. We're hearing the perspective of the committee. Staff have also heard them. There may be some communication back and forth. I'm relit reluctant to make them action items for staff. Mr. Doer.
Staff have reviewed the three recommendations and certainly staff can follow up with the the committee. It's one that if council does choose to move any of those forward, or certainly for a couple of them, there's significant implications and significant. Resources will be required. It's one that right now it's on the agenda, so it's being received for information, so. Staff would recommend unless council wants to move forward with something, just to let us follow up with the committee.
Thanks, Mr. Doer. Counsel Patterson.
Thank you, your worship. So just just for clarity, so if a committee, any committee makes a recommendation. And we just receive it for information and staff say they're going to follow up with the committee, can you just describe a little bit about what that looks like? Mr. Doer.
Yeah, so with this one, there will be a future meeting and we'll just follow up and say the recommendations were adopted by a council. And then we can have a discussion as to how to move forward, but a couple of these are fairly significant resources. And one of these will likely be a part of the library consultation process already, so.
Thank you, worship. Thank you.
Any other, excuse me, any other comments or questions? Staff, we're good. Ms. Chandler.
Thank you to Mayor Astro. Yeah, I just wanted to add that this is some, so it's a legislative requirement that local governments. Update their accessibility plans once in every three years. So next year, the town need to anyway update our accessibility plan. And that may be a good opportunity to have this conversation. We will be having at least two. Community surveys as part of that project, so this can be integrated as part of that overall process. The concern about improving sidebar accessibility. Thank.
Thank you. Okay. Good? All right. And just to make sure we're all on the same page, then I was going to jump past the A P C as well because we're going to get the recommendations and stuff. We're good? Alrighty. So then, Counsel Ray.
Yeah, I also went to U B C M. I. I want to publicly, I don't want, mean to embarrass you, but I really liked the tone that you took with the ministers. Especially those that we've repeatedly asked for the same thing and not gotten answers to. I thought you did a very good job of respectfully. Expressing your frustration and and our citizens' frustration with the lack of movement on some of the things that we've been asking for. And also just, you know, I watched your piece on on check TV. And for a town the size of Smithers, to be even invited to sit on that little little interview. I think it shows how our our advocacy is being heard in some, we're attracting attention to the problems that are coming in Smithers. So thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Thanks, Council Ray. That's very kind. Okay. My report is there, like, like all of you, was that UBCM? And I do want to say one thing that was different, because this is the first time since I've been elected that all of council attended. And, you know, for some, that might be a challenge to hear that we all attended. There was a bench strength in our being there together, which enabled different conversations to happen. And while we attended the meetings as a team, I think, I think it showed that there was strength. We had staff support as well. And I think that actually gets noticed and it also enabled during the after hours for people to do their own sort of who they ran into, who they could talk to, to carry the messages forward. So thanks to everyone for making the effort and taking the time to be there. I think it speaks well for our community. Okay, I'm gonna leave it there. If there's no questions, ready? Then we're up to the fourteen's. There's hardly any of them tonight. Okay. Staff have been busy while we were out doing other things. Look at all the work that staff have done on our behalf. Okay. Fourteen-one, report from Ms. Smith on the airside lease renewal for DJ Airside. Council Ray.
Move the recommendation.
Thank you. Secondar, Council Bukama. Discussion. Council Bukama.
Not really discussion, but I just wanted to highlight that I'm just really happy to see the environmental insurance requirement being enforced. We've been bitten on that a few times in the past. And I think it's a crucial part of airport leases. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Bukama. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Fourteen-two, report also from Ms. Smith on the Alexander Bruce Christie Lease Agreement with recommendation two parts. Council Elliot, Council Leonard. Discussion. Okay, seeing none, all in favor, opposed, and that's carried unanimously. That's really just about a change of user. And fourteen-three from Ms. Smith, the Central Park Building Society Lease Renewal with a recommendation. Council Raven, Council Elliot. Any questions, Council Ray?
Just a quick question through to staff. For some other organizations, we've signed longer leases because they need them for grants. Has that been the case from the Central Park Society?
Mr. Schroder.
The request is not made by the, the Central Park Building Society for a longer lease. And as a result, we've just interpreted that the, the current term that we provided is suitable for their purposes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. It, it just has to be commented how long the Central Park Building Society has managed this building. Since nineteen seventy-nine, they've held in trust a much loved public building. And I've got to say, in my time on council, with little fuss, they take care of the building, manage the tenants, and deliver an amazing community service. So just want to acknowledge that it's a long time. And some of those volunteer board members have been there. We can measure in decades. So astonishing work. Fourteen-four, report from Ms. Westburg on the policy, hiring policy, policy approval with the administration. Recommendation, that's the word I'm struggling with. Council Raven, Council Elliot. Discussion. Council Patterson.
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick question. Under the purpose statement, it includes one appropriate, pardon me, on page one sixty-one of five eighty-six. In the opening paragraph, it states, and one appropriate seniority and residency. And I may have missed it, but I was just curious if the policy needed to include a component on residency. So for example, work visas or permits.
Thanks, Council Patterson. Mr. Schroder.
Thank you very much. To the, the question, we don't believe that there's a we don't believe that there, it is necessary to include work visas or permits, as those are something regulated by the Government of Canada. And the, the Town of Smithers is able to, within those requirements of, of senior levels of government, manage any of those residency or other, other work permit requirements. Just ensuring that we're complying with the requirements of the law.
Council Leonard.
Just want to say that I appreciate the work that's gone into this policy. There's a very small typo at the end of page two, very last sentence. The word "two" needs to be removed. So requiring that candidates validate the skills claimed in their resume. So "two" should be deleted. Thanks.
Okay. Just let me finish this, Council Ray. You're good with that correction, Council Ray?
Yeah, I'm just looking at two E where it says a town may fill positions without advertising in the candidate, maybe directly appointed to the sole discretion of the Chief Administrative Officer. I'm just wondering, because we go to set up and make sure it's a fair process, but then we have this where, where, and I get that's probably for just promotions from within. But I in the past, there has been CAO hirings for things that were not approved by council as well. And I'm trying to, not that I don't trust Mr. Doer, it's just a, a fully hypothetical situation. But if we have a policy where the CAO can just override it, how does that kind of affect the rest of the policy?
Mr. Schroder.
Thank you very much. And in response to the question, council has established another policy that requires staff to inform council of any new positions that are being created and regularly inform council of any hiring, hiring decisions that are made within the organization. Further, it is, it is generally accepted practice that council is made aware of any of, any new positions that are being created within, within the Town of Smithers. And to your note about, you know, the, the types of situations that we would, you know, consider utilizing this, it would most likely, if, if almost exclusively be for those internal promotions.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. Thanks. Fourteen-five, report from Mr. Schroder on the meeting schedule for next year with the recommendation. Council Ray? Okay, we're gonna have to meet next year. Council Leonard? Little hesitancy there. There's too many, I think. All right. Any discussion? Council Bukama.
Just a quick question through to staff. I noticed that the finance meetings are scheduled for January, February, March, April, and not in the fall like we used to do. And my understanding was that sometimes we did finance meetings in the fall to allow for grant applications and putting projects up for bid. Just a question through the staff. Yeah.
I'm going to Director Finance, Mr. Doer.
Yeah, I can jump in on this one. Yeah, we have a new Director of Finance and we're just establishing what the budget process is gonna look, or look like. He is gonna be speaking to that at a point later in the meeting. In terms of having the opportunity to move forward with projects that require that upfront funding, certainly that's one that as we kind of move through the, the budget process in the early part of the new year, staff will be identifying projects that are seeking early approval to bring to council and will present that to council to make sure that those projects are able to be tendered in appropriate time to secure appropriate bids or contracts. That's something that we engaged in last year and hope to carry forward. So from a staff perspective, we're feeling comfortable with moving forward on, on those types of activities. And yeah.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Council Bukama, Council Ray.
Sorry, too, that I think last year, because they were in the five-year plan for the early, we, because we approve a five-year plan and not just the one-year plan, I think that enabled staff to, to bring it to us to expedite some of the things that were already approved for the five-year plan as well.
Thanks, Council Ray. Good memory. Okay, any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Fourteen-six from Ms. LeBlanc. The Elks Field Improvement Plan with the recommendation. Council Ray.
Sorry, I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, and a secondar, Council Raven. Any discussion? Okay, I saw Council Patterson and Council Raven, I think. Council Patterson.
I think you, Mayor Ashro. Just a question through to our CEO. Under the resource considerations, it says at this stage, there's no financial implications. But do you have any concerns around staff time? I'm just thinking about maybe some of the other partnership or similar projects that we have on the go.
Mr. Doer.
Yeah, staff bring or intends to bring for council consideration, just the overall HR or the resources required to manage all these partnership agreements. So the intention is to bring that to council for discussion at a future meeting. In terms of this one, we have a process that's been identified already. The proponent did present to council. Right now, staff does not see any or have any objections to them receiving approval in principle. And then we'll continue to look at the process of managing these partnership agreements.
Go ahead. Thank you very much. And just in case any of the youth that are listening that came to present, I just wanted to say how incredibly proud I am for, to them for leading this group. And I really look forward to the work that they're gonna do. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Patterson, Council Raven, and Council Ray.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick note about just how when organizations come together with a clear plan, because there's times where people say, well, the town should, and then it's very broad, and then a town makes a decision, and then it kind of falters. This is just a really good way of an organization being very proactive and clear with what they wanted to do and taking it on. And I just think that's a really good way moving forward.
Thanks, Council Raven, Council Ray.
Yeah, I, in response to the first question, like I heard that, and I believe it's in, in part of our budget, that that's something we'll be discussing. But just to note that if the community wasn't coming forward with these things and, and we didn't have this in place, they probably just wouldn't happen because the same things that the staff have to do, plus they would be in charge of the project. So this is still a better way through, although we do have to have that level of service talk about how many of these we can take on at any given time, but it's, things happen in the community faster with this than, than they would with just council directing staff to do things.
Thanks, Council Ray. Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. So fourteen-seven, Council Ray, if you can take the chair, I'm gonna recuse myself. I sit on the Board of the Northern BC Tourism Association.
All right, so we have a letter of, a request for letter of support and a staff recommendation to provide the letter. Council Raven moves, Council Bukama seconds. Any discussion on this? Counselor Patterson, sorry.
That's okay. So I want to make sure I wasn't cutting anyone off. I think you, Deputy Mary, just a quick question. Under the second bullet, under partnership contributions on page five, I think I might just misinterpret this bullet. So it says a financial contribution to create the leverage funds required to access, et cetera, et cetera. I just want to make sure I understand, if we provide the letter of support, that's simply all we're providing. There's no expectation that we're then to provide a financial contribution at a later date, correct?
Through to staff.
That is correct.
Hey, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously.
Thanks, Council Ray. Thanks, Council Raven for the reminder. Fourteen-eight from Buckley Valley Cross Country Ski Club, seeking letter of support. Council Raven, Council Elliot. Discussion. Did I say a hand? Council Patterson.
Thank you, your worship. So just a question under page two, where this is the specific requirement that was provided from the applicant. It says, include the monetary value of the in-kind support provided. I just wasn't clear on what was being, like what specifically they were asking for. And if it really matters, I just thought I might have missed that. I'm sorry, I might have jumped ahead. I just want to make sure. Apologies, your worship. Just one moment. I jumped ahead. Apologies. I'm thinking on the next one. Sorry.
Okay, then. No problem. Any other questions on this one? All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. So then fourteen-nine from the Buckley Valley Folk Music Society, letter of support request. Council Bukama, Council Elliot. Questions? Is this the one, Council Patterson? Okay.
Thank you, your worship. I just wasn't clear on what the request for the letter of support would be outside of just the letter of support itself, unless I missed that. So maybe just a question through to staff if I missed that.
Ms. LeBlanc, my girl. Ms. LeBlanc.
Thank you, Mayor. They're just asking for the in-kind donations that the town makes. Last year, we provided that we picked up barricades, garbage cans, things like that, that the town does for the Buckley Valley Music Festival.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? And that was carried. Fourteen-ten from Mr. Lee. This is regarding the UBCM Active Transportation Planning Grant with a recommendation. Council Patterson moves. Or a secondar? Council Elliot. Discussion. Council Ray.
So this isn't picking on the act of transportation. Because I did bring it up for the Recreation Master Plan, and that's to avoid the big moves that, that set the expectation. Because a lot of the time, these plans come to the town, and if you don't approve the plan, or you have any problems with the plan, it's too late because if you turn it down, you don't get the money. And the town ends up paying for the plan. So just thought, you know, I I kind of expected that the Third Avenue Bike Lane will be on there, and it's too bad. I actually think we needed downtown plan first before we included. I'd hate to see it as the number one big move again. Just because I feel that there's other planning that needs to be done. And the other problem with the plans and the big moves is they never consider the financial ability of the town to do things. So I just want to make sure that that kind of feedback's included in, in. You know, we can have priorities, but calling them big moves and making them seem like they're going to be acted upon right away has been a problem with several plans that have come to my, during my time in council. So I'd just like to see if we could try and avoid that.
Thanks, Council Ray, Council Bukama.
Thanks, Mayor Ashro. Yeah, with, with council turning down the Third Avenue Protected Bike Lane, I can see there is a desire to rewrite the Act of Transportation Plan. And I'm willing to support that, but I hope that in the rewriting of it, that they will be very mindful of the conversation that happened around the council table in the last year or two. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Bukama, Council Raven.
I really like that this came back to the table, especially with the discussions that have happened where we're kind of at a stop with our act of transportation plan. I think this is the opportunity for us to provide some clarity and direction, and I, I don't disagree with Council Ray. I know the Parks and Rec Master Plan caused a little bit of hiccup where people thought things were getting implemented much quicker. But I think that also kind of falls to us is to make sure we're communicating clearly what the expectations are if we end up approving a plan.
Thanks, Council Raven. Anyone else? Yeah, I'm just gonna say I'm happy to see this as well. You know, whatever the language is, whether they're called big moves or priorities, what they are, you know, I would expect that once the plan is received, it's gonna reflect what the community has provided feedback on. It's always up to council to determine how it enacts the plan. But without, without plans, we're stuck. Previously, council, including the previous council, looked to take some initiatives in parks and trails. And we were urged to wait until we had the Parks and Trails Master Plan. Now we do. So that enables us to take steps forward. And if we don't do that, we tend to make decisions in a vacuum, and sometimes we regret them. So. So I think having the plan is smart. I'm I'm not worried about what those priorities are, what are called. We're going to have to trust the table of the day to make the decision. And whatever the recommendations are of the community, when it comes together, we're going to need to hear that as well, that, you know, we are also obligated to be open to the the feedback of the community. Council Ray.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that Parks and Recreation Master Plan started out with that same kind of language. And I think by softening the language, making sure it was, you know, there's a lot of stuff in the plan that kind of kind of signals the reader that it's not all going to happen in the next five or six years, but it it is a plan that we can follow. So that's more what I'm looking at. I mean, obviously, there's going to be things we want to do. That's not in question. It's just how we package the the plan that's important.
Thanks, Council Ray. I think I was just expressing a divergent view. Okay, if there's any other comments, we'll hear them now. Otherwise, all in favor? Any opposed, and that carries unanimously. Thanks, folks. And thanks to staff for putting that back on the agenda. I'm sure that was a hard one. Okay, we are at fourteen eleven from Mr. Smith, the N D I T Facade Improvement Grant Program with the recommendation. Council Elliot, Council Raven. Any discussion on this one, any questions? The great program well utilized every time. All in favor, any opposed, and that's carried. Oh, sorry, Council Leonard, can we have a break? Oh, absolutely. It's a long night, or is five minutes enough? Okay, it's a quick break. It's a hard chair this night. Okay, five minutes. Okay, we're back. And we are at fourteen twelve, the report from Mr. Okay. You got power? No. Actually, let's just take a second, then. Maybe we can get you a paper agenda or something. Well, let's try and figure it out now. Just Logan's running, no more. What's Actually, I think we see a paper agenda coming. Okay. Council Ray.
Just while Council Leonard's getting organized, I move that we bring eighteen thirteen forward at this time.
Seconder. Council Raven, this is to vary the agenda, bring eighteen, what was the number? Eighteen thirteen forward, all in favor? Any opposed, and that's carried unanimously. Thank you for that. Are you good, Council Leonard? Okay, so we're going to fourteen twelve with the eighteen brought forward. The recommendations are there. Someone on move it to get it on the floor? Council Patterson, the whole thing. Okay. Seconder, Council Ray. A lot of chocolate stuck here. Timing is everything. Okay, the recommendation is on the floor. Council, any questions, comments, Council Ray?
Well, first of all, I'm glad the people spoke at the start of the meeting because I was thinking outdoor equipment. I thought it was going to be an outdoor equipment, like skis and stuff like that. So it was good to have that clarification. So I have two questions. First of all, is can we base our decision on the type of businesses going in there, given that it could change? It's this is really about the coverage and not what's going in there.
Ms. Chandler and Mr. Allen, what do you want to help us here? Ms. Chandler.
Thank you to Council Ray, to Mayor Atro. So this is a home occupation, as you know, the town of Smitha zoning bala has strict regulation as to what all can be permitted under home occupation. So my understanding, based on the description provided by the applicant, is that this business would be so mainly focusing on gathering used sports equipments and their resale. So they which may involve minor repair. But everything will be conducted within the building. And which is a requirement as per the zoning bala as well for home occupation. So hundred percent of the activities are to be conducted within within the building. So that will basically address all most of the concerns that are the members, the neighbors from the other side had expressed at the beginning of the meeting. And so home occupation, they also will have to abide by the town's nuisance by law, property maintenance by law, noise by law, all these regulations. So if at all, it becomes an issue in future, it will be addressed at that point. But they will have to comply with the requirements at that point. And if the owner, for any reason, failed to comply with those requirements, and if it continues to or if it is proven to be a nuisance to the neighbors, then the town can cancel the business license. Thank you.
Council Ray.
So I think you answered my second question. But so it's enclosed, but I believe it has a large garage door. I'm a little concerned that in the summer, the the large garage door will be open and and that could be annoying thing. But I think you've outlined the tools very well, so I'll keep my opinions to myself in case there's more questions.
Okay, and I didn't get other hands. So are there other questions? Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, worship. So I just want to say I absolutely love the idea, the business model, especially around supporting a circular economy in a predominantly recreation driven community. And I'm trying to check my bias because I live directly next to a business, quite a popular business, where it's quite loud. But I've sort of come to live with it. But I do think just there's a couple of concerns I have with the fact that the business adjacent and as they expressed is very small, the corridor would have impacts just because it's not clear. I sort of had the same assumption as Council Ray and that we were talking about, for example, other recreation gear that wouldn't be a snowmobile. For example, as the concerning citizens sort of raise that concern, and as somebody who owns a snowmobile, it is excessively loud. So for me, I'm really worried about that. Even when I load up my snowmobile, I'm I feel terrible that it's so loud, and I don't want to disturb the neighbors. So the a question through to staff, when we talk about they have to abide by the noise bylaws, does that still mean that they can be noisy, but just through the standard operating hours? Is that correct? Like, I can't remember what they are, Ms. Chandler, and I apologize, but during the day, essentially.
Ms. Chandler.
Thank you to Council Patterson. So the applicant is proposing to operate the business from eleven thirty A M to five P M, which is very similar to how they are operating from the current location. So one another option is if council regards noise as a potential concern, a restrictive covenant of restricting the operation of that business from the auxiliary building is an option. Thank you.
Sorry, and if I may just, I know we've talked about parking is something that's an issue across town, but I would just say in this particular corner, I find it extremely congested, especially the existing paved parking lot that's predominantly used by shoppers. And I believe the brewery, I'm not exactly sure who has tenure to use that particular parking lot. And then same the that existing lane, I find it incredibly hard to imagine that there is going to be parking stalls along that alleyway. I recently visited the Jade First Aid, and I was actually kind of surprised that that was their primary access because it's such a narrow corridor. So for me, as much as I absolutely love this business model, I just think I'm concerned about the sound and then also the the parking. So if there was some alternative options that could be presented and how we might mitigate those concerns, I'd be open to that. But at this point, I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Patterson. I'm going to go to Council Raven. I just wanted to say one thing. Because what we heard at the beginning from the folks who spoke in the public comment period was about, you know, an expectation that there might be power equipment there. So this business already operates downstairs, and they do consignment on outdoor gear, much as what one of you said, that's like skis and backpacks and bicycles. And so they're already operating downtown, whether or not folks have been in their shop or not. And it is, that's the type of stuff. It doesn't mean that they might not have a future vision, but that's actually the shop that they have right now. It's it's all clothing and bikes and skis and snowboards. Council Raven.
You just took away my whole first point. No, but I was going to say it's just to the best of my knowledge, is no concern raised at their current site. But I did want to delve in just to the discussion at A P C, just super quick. So A P C's concern was mostly about the parking and them wanting to move the building up. So you could actually do angle parking instead of the way that it's set up now, where it's the two sideways lots. And the other concern that was also brought up was snow removal, just because it's literally kind of surrounded by parking on all sides. And just making sure there's something in place where it doesn't get pushed into the alley. So but those were the main, the main concerns of A P C. On the parking piece, there is the what other parking lot that is right by Jade First Aid as well. So I think there's a lot of parking around it that did also come up to kind of mitigate some of the concerns.
Thanks, Council Raven for clarity. That's our Second Avenue Parking Lot. That's you're talking about. Okay. Okay, a couple of things I've heard, are there other questions? I'm just going to seek a bit more clarity here from staff. None of this are the questions that I had at the beginning. So we're I'm kind of off on a tangent now, but just Council Raven commented on the A P C's desire that the building be pushed back. Are those are those tools we have? So right now, the property owner is applying to have the home base business in their yard, and they're proposing the building. Do we, so we could deny, but do we have tools where we could say, here are some considerations for you, the concerns that we've had from A P C or council would be to take some pressure off the the laneway by pushing the building back? That's one. Maybe I'll just stop there. Do we have those kind of tools?
Thank you to Mayor Atro. Sure, council has that authority, so it can be added as a third condition. So that the D V P is approved. A B, subject to the condition that it is setback by these many meters from the lane. Yeah, thank you.
Just as a follow up, Ms. Chandler, and when you were having, I assume you had the conversations with the applicant. Was that discussed, and was there a reason why the applicant wanted the building pushed back or pushed toward the lane?
So my understanding is that the planning lead on this application, he had that conversation with the applicant. And it was to ensure the functionality of the residential use that he wanted to have that yard in between the buildings. That is my understanding. Thank you.
Okay, then one other thing, if if the property owner, and I might be misunderstanding the zone, if the property owner instead wanted to take down everything they had and build a commercial building, they could cover one hundred percent of their property. Is that correct?
I think you to Mayor Atro, that is kind of a hundred percent correct. So currently, this is in C one A residential overlay zone. So one of the option, one of the options they had was to completely repurpose this existing building for residential use. But they wanted to actually live on the on the same property, but are converting the friend to for commercial use is permitted in the C one A, but not the residential use. So that would have required shuffling the entire interior, which I I don't know, like whether even if it is even feasible. Given the age of that building, but that was definitely an option. Thank you.
Thanks for that. I mean, overall, I like the idea, but you know, we are hearing the concerns just about the you know, the the tight lane. I I think there is municipal parking nearby, so that piece ought to work itself out. I I think there is municipal parking nearby, uh, so that piece ought to work itself out. I'm kind of curious where else the conversation goes, but I'd be interested in whether or not the applicant would consider giving a bit more space to the lane. And at the same time, if our rules allow a business to build to the lane, they allow them to build to the lane, that's our problem. Like, we could make an adjustment there if we didn't like it. And I heard Counselor Patterson on parking, and I've raised parking at this table many times, like we gotta, we're gonna have to address this as a council, but so far we haven't, which means the current parking rules are in place. So if someone wants to build one hundred percent, they could. And we're going to try to figure out the parking as a community because we're not making them do it under certain business operations, right? So it is a busy part of town. Um, you know, this is a fairly low impact business. However, I sat at this table long enough as well to know that it ought to be a good idea for whatever business, because sometimes properties change. And maybe Ms. Chandler, correct me on this, but if someone purchased a property, is the home occupation specific to this business? If a new owner bought it, could they have a home occupation in that building for another purpose? And then I'll go to Counselor Leonard.
Uh, thank you to Mayor Ashel. So no, this license will be issued in the name of the current owner. And if the new owner wants to have run the same operation from the building, that is possible. Um, but it it will, he will have to submit a change of ownership application. Or it may be come an entirely different kind of business, or it may be just used as a uh office space or for storage. So it's up to the new owner.
But if it was a different business, if I wanted to run, I don't know, the chainsaw repair business, do I need to get a different home occupation license?
Yes, uh, thank you. Yeah, so that will be a different category that will fall under light industrial category, which wouldn't fall within the purview of home occupation. So um, the town wouldn't issue a home occupation license for that honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Counselor Leonard.
Um, just wanted to make a couple of points. I know that lane very well because I used to take my daughters there um to dance um almost every day for five years. So um, it is tight, but the structure isn't there anymore because they've taken it down. They want to put up a new building, but that was also like right up from my memory, right up to the lane. So that confined space has been there for many, 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 many years. Um, so we're not really changing by allowing this, we're not really changing that. Um, plus, just to to confirm that we are creating two additional um offlane parking stalls for the property. So there are two additional parking spaces being created.
Thanks, Counselor Leonard. Counselor Ray?
Yeah, and so now rereading it. I I was correct in my original assumption that doesn't sound like there's gonna be two stroke engines uh being repaired there anyway. Um, and the other thing is is that just knowing that I I was kind of wondering where the average of six customers today per day was coming, but if it's from experience, then if there, if you're providing two parking spaces, it, I mean, it's still gonna be tight in there. It's not a great parking lot to go into, but um, I think that should um alleviate any concerns, so I'll be supporting that.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. Uh, Counselor Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Ashel. So question through to staff as I'm starting to be swayed listening to um some of the conversation that's had. Because the design is a is a garage versus um like a traditional building structure. Can you speak at all about sound barrier? Like, will there be anything in the design of the, sorry? But sorry, thank you.
Hmm, thank you to Counselor Patterson. Um, I don't know about the structural details of the proposed building, but this is something uh my understanding that the building inspector will look into. Um, and definitely we will, the owner, when he submits the home occupation license application, he has to sign the home occupation checklist, which clearly states that he has to comply with the noise regulations. So um, yeah, we will make sure that he is completely aware of the expectations and that he must comply with it. Thank you.
Anyone else? I just have a couple more going back to where I started from when I read it. And it actually had to do perhaps where Counselor Patterson was going, just on the design of the building. So I understand from reading it that it's a steel structure. So I'm just looking for confirmation. This is not a container.
Um, thank you, Mayor Ashel. That is correct. It's not a container.
Okay, and then just to the colors. So it's hard for me to tell just from this, but it looks like it's either a black or a dark brown building. And I wonder, I think there's a reference in here somewhere where form and character doesn't apply in this case. So I'm just curious about any conversations with the building owner, if if my assumption on the colors are correct, about just, you know, sort of working with the mountain theme.
Um, thank you, Mayor Ashel. Uh, so mountain theme, it includes a wide range of colors that are related to nature. So different shades of gray and including some shades of black, they're all fall within that uh palette, which makes it difficult um to say that this is not possible. But um, my understanding is that based on the delegation presentation at the APC meeting, the consultant had said that they are open to very, very much open to working with um staff or the neighbors um adjusting uh colors of the building. Thank you.
Thanks. I think it's hard for me to hear shades of black. That's one thing. That's just me. Um, but yeah, I think um any effort to conform with the mountain theme is just one more positive. Um, you know, aesthetic in the community. And as the community develops, we're gonna see more laneway development as well. So what they look, you know, once upon a time, it probably didn't matter so much what was in the back alley, but it's going to matter, especially in the commercial area. And we have seen some businesses do extraordinary developments all the way around their building. So every facade is really quite lovely. And so I think it behooves us to think about, you know, the lane developments as well and that they are contributing to the aesthetic of the community. In addition to, I appreciate the economic part. Okay, any last rounds, Counselor Patterson? Did you ever had a two? Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, worship. Last question um through to staff. Do we have a requirement for SEP debt in new applications?
Uh, thank you to Counselor Patterson. The um SEP data is part of the design review, development permit design review. For typical applications like this, we don't um consider SEP that as a big factor. But hmm, it's up to the owner to decide, take into those safety and uh safety and potential other even issues uh while designing a building, but in um, yeah, that's my thing. Thank you.
Okay, this one took a little bit of time. Maybe my one, my one last remark is the thing about this business that I really like is that it does recycle, that it takes people's used gear and gives others an opportunity. And I've taken gear in there and they work at you to make sure that you're having prices that will make your used equipment affordable to new people who want to participate. So they work on their clients as well to make sure we're getting with the program. Okay. Recommendation is on the floor. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried, Ms. Buchanan. Alrighty, now, Mr. Welsh, hoping you haven't fallen asleep in our whole long discussion, a handheld mic too. What's about to happen here? We have um Mr. Welsh and the budget, a spoken word, uh, the budget approach. Um, let's just get the motion on the table so we know what we're talking to. Counselor Bukama, Counselor Raven, all in favor? Any all, any opposed? Okay, we're just gonna vote to get it on the table first. Okay, all in favor, opposed, and that's on the table, Counselor Patterson?
Uh, just the small um error in the recommendation itself. It says that council direct staff to develop to the twenty twenty six, so I would just amend it to remove um two. Pardon me, to the
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Can we just do that by consensus? Okay, thank you. All right, um, Mr. Welsh?
All right, I got finally get the floor. Thank you, guys. It's kind of my time of year, so kind of fun to talk about budget stuff with you guys. But yeah, I just met with uh Counselor Bukama, Counselor Leonard, in regards to how we're gonna approach the twenty twenty six budget, or at least looking for direction from you guys. So what are we doing? Well, we're looking to kind of like outline budget development methodology, principles and policy, which is generally kind of the approach of how I take and kind of going through our like forward and creating the budget. Um, and also some of the assumptions and methodology I'll be using and we're looking to use. Um, kind of looking for direction from you guys and some of our draft priorities, some options and taxation levels. Um, and kind of I see some input in our next steps of the budget. Um, some of the big things that coming in is baseline cost increases. What is that? Um, mostly that's inflation, um, general cost increases and costs going across. So even if we didn't change anything in our budget and how our services, we generally have an uptick in price and prices and cost. Most likely that we have a collective agreement, which generally intakes like uh implicates a general wage increase. So it's an increase in our fixed costs. And also you get general things like unfortunately, insurance never becomes cheaper, hydros, utilities, gas, and general things like that. Um, kind of going into that too. Another approach we can kind of look at is service level. Um, if we kind of factored it in the last approach with this is we offer a certain level of service. So one of the things Smithers does is like plowing uh plowing roads, clearing sidewalks, um general increases across. So you can modify your kind of budget by changing some levels of lows, because obviously less service, less price, more services, more price or cost in general, kind of uh issues like that. But to manage growth, um, growth is great, gives a new tax base. Um, neat one to say is like we brought Ample Side online over the past little bit of years, but what does Ample Side require? Driveways or streets to be cleared, sidewalks to be cleared, is a general thing, garbage pickup. So yes, you have a bit of the gross that stretches your resources a little thinner, unless you kind of add additional resources or staffing to accommodate that. Um, another approach of that too is in managing these funding source alignment. I'll get into this a little bit later. Ongoing stable expenditures should be funded through stable revenues, taxation, user fees, general things like that. More volatility kind of stuff like that, one-off expenses should generally come from like grants, reserves, debt, or kind of less stable things. Big thing is you add a new stable expense, you have an increase in your fixed cost, that's generally gonna have to be funded. We'll talk about that when we talk about kind of our policing costs in the next little bit. Um, is we kind of uh counsel rave it up a little bit earlier, five-year financial plan, it gives a bit of spending authority over five years. And you kind of adjust that every year, kind of generally going forward. All right. Um, two couple of the big ones to next going forward is life cycle costing, adding new assets. Oh. Yeah, uh, there we go. I guess my uh Floyd's in the concert. Sorry, assets. We buy things, you got to maintain them. They cost money to run and maintain. And uh, kind of kind of factor that in, water treatment plants have a finite life, roads have a finite life. Generally plan to kind of increase those in going forward. One of my favorite things to kind of remember is if you bring on something new, there is cost of maintaining and running it. You have a car, you have to generally pay for oil changes, insurance, fixed costs. So bringing on new kind of assets like that, new roads, new uh rec facilities, general things like that, they generally have kind of increasing costs. Um, my favorite one for the budget too is trends. I'm a numbers guy, as you see by the first thing my report has a minor spelling error. So I generally like looking at numbers and generally seeing going through that. And I think I can really drive that working with you guys, my staff, through kind of increased financial reporting, kind of look, looking where actually spending and optimizing that. Most public companies do quarterly reports and they formally go out. My goal is to bring that to you guys, help make decision making and be more accountable with our taxpayer mind. Some assumptions I have going into this, our favorite thing, inflation. Uh, I like to use the B C twelve month average. So it's kind of a trailing one, kind of factoring in, so it doesn't take one offs. And the last stat I got, which I use in factoring this budget is two point three percent. Now we get into the fun stuff. Police budget, this one is kind of reoccurring, and it was really nice with uh Sergeant Law coming in today and talking about this. Is we've been requesting about eleven staff level of service for the past couple of years, and they've been delivering about nine point five. So we've been having a bit of a budget surplus, but we also haven't been taxing appropriately for these eleven police officers. So what that means is there's been about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of surplus budgeted to kind of cover this cost. So as we talked about before at stable funding sources, this is in a sustainable trend. So fortunately, due to the surpluses for the past couple of years of costs actually being under what we requested, we haven't used that kind of surplus, but that is one thing going forward to Sam, you have the next slide. Not a disabled practice. So if we look at our, I like actuals and budgets comparison to kind of see how things going. So our twenty twenty five budget, if you looked, had a two hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred dollar transfer from reserve to kind of cover the surplus or cover the shortfall, uh, because we're not taxing for all um, the offices requesting, but also in the past, we haven't been receiving that service going forward. But what Sergeant Law says, they have up this service a little bit, we're getting more offices in place. So this surplus will go away. I included at the bottom, this fund contains three hundred and five thousand dollars of NRC surplus in this fund. So if we're using two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of that, we have eighty thousand dollars remaining. So going forward, if this will kind of be one of these things, if we want to maintain this level of service, we have to uptick our kind of taxation on this one. So as that's changing, as they stabilize, if they bring up to eleven police officers we requested, we have to review how we're funding this police level service. Or otherwise, do we have to decrease it, or this is something we're looking for a little bit of guidance for? Because currently we have but a year of this, if they pull into pull up to eleven officers, we'll be down and be in a deficit position, and obviously it has to be funded, because that's something we can't do, but I'll commit a general fund surplus. Um, next one along this one too is we're looking for a bit of guidance in recreation and community services. Um, as we kind of see, there's been approach with community partnerships and generally issue or things around that. Um, community demands on recreation kind of prevent an opportunity for council to reassess the town's role in supporting recreation and community services more broadly. Um, saying clear direction now, I'm kind of sure account that community services or it says in recreation are aligned with long-term community priorities and deliver the greatest value to residents. A lot of this is reviewing the community partnership program. Um, we also bought a building. So um, that was purchased in twenty twenty five. We plan to be operational by twenty twenty seven. Um, generally buying a bigger building will result in some higher operating costs, utilities, maintenance, staffing. As we talked about before, life cycle costing, there'll probably be some higher repairs and maintenance and funds to go forward with this going forward. And also, we have to determine the scope of future programming and services. We have a smaller building over there, we're moving to a larger space. What kind of level of service and program delivery would we like coming out of the library? Um, based on my numbers so far, if we keep service levels the same, I'm looking about at two point eight one percent property tax increase. Main driver of that, as you can see, is the top and the bottom line. Um, generally inflation, general cost increases and uh two hundred and seven thousand dollars of wages. Staff vacancies, um, because we had some nice uh procedures lately of most of our full-time positions have now been filled. So going forward into twenty twenty six, there isn't too many vacancies. One plan for budgeting is you have these positions allotted, is factor in for the percentage of the year they're here. So that is one kind of practice, but now we're pretty much at full staffing level. There's just about two positions outstanding going forward. Um, now, I'm not a big fan of if you staff the position fully, make sure it's fully funded, that kind of talks along with the uh uh funding source, funding and source alignment. Now, fun part, uh, general timeline approaching is looking to have preliminary operating budgets brought to council for January sixth, uh, capital budgets, January twentieth, our consolidated budget, February third. Um, obviously, financial plans have to be adopted by May fourteenth, so we'd like to have that adopted by then. And I know I talk a little fast sometimes, just wondering if anyone has any questions, and we're looking for some guidance and what to approach for twenty twenty six.
Thanks, Mr. Welsh. I'm just gonna give the opportunity first to our finance chairs, and then we'll go around if there was anything that you wanted to jump in with. So Counselor Bukama, Counselor Leonard. You don't have to.
No, I mean, the only thing that comes to mind for me is that Counselor Leonard and I have had twice, twice we've met with uh Mr. Welsh leading up to the budget season. But I just have really appreciated how thorough you've been and um, how nicely you've laid everything out for us in tonight's package. So I think it's gonna be a very smooth budget season. I don't know if Counselor Leonard feels the same way. That's the sense I get.
Counselor Leonard?
Um, I do. I I appreciate um your pragmatic approach to numbers. Um, um, yeah, and I think what you've laid out is is um a solid path forward and and just want to maybe draw your attention or everybody's attention to page two of the of the report. Of the report. So I think just just to be clear, Mr. Walsh is is, I guess, looking for our. Endorsement or or. Support for going forward with these financial principles. The sustainability, the plan to manage growth, the transparency value for money asset stewardship and risk aware. So for good with him following that approach. Then he'll be presenting these numbers to us in January is what he's kind of saying. So I just want to make that clear.
Thanks, Councilor Leonard. Okay, Councilor.
So I really appreciated the presentation and I love that you used the car analogy because that's the same one I use all the time where it's like, hey, oil changes tires. These are things and you also need two sets of tires because we live in the north. One thing I would, so I fully support what is written here, but one curiosity, well curiosity I have, sorry. Is we have the budget survey out right now and I'm wondering how that ties in. Because I'm very curious to see the results and what the public feedback is, like especially when we talk about service levels, I would really like to. I'm wondering how it's all going to weave together, I guess is my question.
Thanks, Councilor Roman. Mr. Walsh.
I believe Sam, the results closed today or was it yesterday? Today, so we're waiting to compile all those and definitely I'm really excited to, I like the digital online platforms because you can get more data. It's really kind of fun to analyze that one. So it is something we're looking to see. And we just waited for it to close because we kind of review it and figure out a way to present it to council.
Thanks, others, Council Patterson and then Council Ray.
Thank you, Miratul. Love the enthusiasm for budget planning and I heard you talk about, you know, putting the community first when you talk about lower taxation. So I really appreciate that. Question for you on the principle around value for money, when we say tie dollars to outcomes, measure results, love that. Can you just describe a little bit about what that might look like?
A lot of that too is like when you're spending money, like really determining the scope of the project and what you're kind of pursuing going forward. How to like measure an outcome. A lot of that comes down to planning beforehand. Like our favorite one right now is we bought the library. Right now we're going into community needs assessment to determine the proper way of going forward, what to do with that and to kind of make sure it's done. The proper budget, proper inputs, you know, the results we're kind of looking for.
Thank you, worship. And second question through to the C O. Around on page, pardon me, three, so the next page. When we see the staffer seeking council's direction on having that conversation around level of service. I was just curious if we have an idea of when we're going to be having that conversation.
So right now the assumption is that we're going to carry everything forward with our existing levels of service. If council chooses to identify different areas that we could look into and one being specifically some of the impacts of recreation. Which we are some of the changing community debt demands related to recreation services that we offer. Please speak up and just vocalize it right now is I guess what I'd say. And then staff is having conversations in the background to bring just, you know, the the partnership agreements and how those will be. The impacts to our operations and the costs at a future point, future meeting.
Council Patterson.
If I may, worship. So I apologize. I don't think maybe I understand the full picture here. So. For example, we talked about, yes, parks and recreation services. We also talk about policing, the new library. There's a number of things that were mentioned here that. We need to have a conversation as council. So I guess my question is, at what point do we talk about? Yes, a library, there's the airport, there's a number of things. I'm just curious, do we do it one by one or all together?
What I would encourage council to do is bring up any points that they'd like to specifically speak to. So these are just some of the big considerations that we do have on the table. We can, you know, arrange alternative meetings if we want to go in depth in terms of the level of service for any of these particular items. But I think with the library, for example, we do know that there's going to be uncertainties because we purchased a new building, we're unsure about what. Services are going to be offered out of that. So it's kind of just bringing it to council's awareness that there are some uncertainties. And same with R C and P, we did get the update from the acting staff sergeant earlier tonight. Talking about the numbers they presently have and what has been budgeted for. So if there is anything specifically that you'd like to discuss, this is the time to bring it forward so that. Staff can hear it and that we can consider it. But the assumption is that we'd be carrying forward with our existing level of service.
Thanks, Mr. Jordan. Council Patterson, I sense you're not. You're there. Okay, go ahead.
So I'll just say that I'm ready to have those conversations. So maybe I'll just list the ones that I'm interested in talking about. Sorry, your worship, I'm.
Mr. Schroder.
Thank you very much. And I don't want to take anything away from from Sam who may have more information on this, but I do know that. Council will additionally be receiving some information on what we heard report. From some of the public feedback that we've we've received from from this. And that could be an additional opportunity for for council to raise items of of interest to staff.
Maybe as a seesaw here and also I'm just going to say to the table, I've lost track of who wants to speak. I had too many lists, so I'm going to do that afterwards. Perhaps hearing where Council Patterson's going that you have the list, it's okay, we can put that on the table. And then hearing Mr. Schroder, perhaps for now, we could do things in point form. Make sure we get the feedback from the consultation and if necessary, probably is necessary. Just set a time, even if it's a future one of these meetings, block out a little bit of time. To make sure that we all agree on which areas we're going to talk about if we need to set extra meetings. So just try to look for a path through this evening. To carving out time if needed for whichever items go on the list. I'll go back to Council Patterson and then I'm looking for hands.
Thank you, worship. And just one point of clarity, just so I'm ensuring that my interpretation is correct. If we were to talk about, for example, the police budget and that unsustainable model that we sort of referenced. Would that conversation be separate to a conversation around service level? Or do you see that as a synonymous conversation?
This is a synonymous conversation.
Okay, so my list would essentially be every area in this report in which. That's sort of been highlighted that we should consider. So I'll just start, my list would be. Paul G's worship, I'm just scrolling here, the budget, police budget. Recreation and community services. Library services. The airport budget. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Council Patterson. Council Ray.
So I have a couple of questions. So first of all, just wondering, and it may be for the reasons we discussed, why are we not starting with capital since it needs to go a little quicker?
Mr. Walsh.
Capital approach, I haven't compiled up capital budgets from staff yet. So normally our approach is generally operational and then capital.
Then a couple. I'm going off where you get the two point eight one. Can you speak to why the. How many replacement reserve is being dropped by seventy five? Is that because we're now leasing things?
Mr. Walsh.
I'm just trying to find the council raise my image for council raise a question, everything one second.
Sorry, so I'm referring to the table on page seven, sorry.
So what was the question in council?
Just I noticed that the the one of the things is contributing decreases the M E replace. Replacement reserve, is that going down because we're leasing things now?
Generally, yeah, that was the planned budget from the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five capital plan was the planned in the. Transfer to the machinery and equipment reserve. So I kept that steady. A bit of that has been transferred. Bit of the change due to the leasing and so the vehicles, that was a carry forward item and how that impacted my tax assessment for twenty twenty six.
Okay, and then I guess the other one, the debt and interest adjustment. Is there a debt rate being retired this year that is saving us not much money?
A bit of that was for how the vehicles are financed and what the actual cost came in as we did the transition. First base budget and actuals. So I did include a schedule appendix, appendix D showing what kind of made up the twenty twenty five budget for debt and interest. And also for twenty twenty six. But I go, it's just between budget and actuals for the equipment financing.
Okay, so just a couple of general comments. I'm a little afraid we're setting unrealistic two point eight percent. So when I, when I think about the library, for example, we're going to be taking that building over in March. I think we should be accruing. With the reserves for that building from the day we take it forward. And then I think the other thing, and it may be in in the deeper numbers somewhere, is that we're now. From March till whenever we move out of that library, we're paying the bills for two buildings. So I don't know if that's reflected in here. And then, you know, the. The asset management stuff. That's something, this is just my opinion, it's not something councils really are on the same page. But I feel like any increase that's really small is ignoring something like. We've got our asset management plans coming, but I think we should be accruing money. I. I think I differ from the rest of the council. If the tax increase needs to be ten percent to fund things in the future. I feel like we're making the people that are going to be using it in the future pay for it later. And I've never really been a fan of that, so. That'll be something for council to discuss. I appreciate your approach and I think the other thing. The R C and P trend adjustment, especially hearing that we now have eleven officers online. I do agree with that. I appreciate that. Thanks.
It sounds great. Okay, Council Leonard and then Council Buchanan.
Yeah, I just wanted to express my support for maintaining current service levels. And agree with my fellow counselors that obviously the the library costs are. Likely in addition to to what we're seeing, because we haven't had that conversation, we haven't really sort of assessed what that might look like. And appreciate that Mr. Walsh has brought that up. And I also support funding the R C and P gap as well.
Thanks, Council Leonard, Council Buchanan. I'm going to put myself in there too.
Thanks, Miratul. And not to limit the conversation tonight, but I really like the thought too of having, as Mr. Schroder suggested, that we. Continue the budget conversation once we receive all the public. Feedback summarized. I think that'll be quite enlightening and I think it'll be. Perfect starting point for budget conversation.
Thanks, Council Buchanan. Okay, I'm just going to hop in as well. Generally, I support the principles. I think that was one of the questions. I also at this point would not be in favor of reducing service levels. I'm prepared for a conversation that might see some nuance about a little of this, a little of that, but generally. I'm not looking for any cuts. I I have a question on the R C and P gap because I thought we were funding that. It's my recollection in previous budget conversations that we were paying ahead to try to reduce that gap. Am I mistaken?
One second, worship.
Yeah, no problem.
Your worship, if I may, I think when Mr. Wallace left the organization. That that we may have missed that in the in the subsequent budget. So I think it might be hard for Mr. Wallace to find.
Okay, okay, that's fine. If it's not there, that that was actually a direction. That council had supported. We had a multi year plan to pay for that gap. So if we missed it last year. It's a strange year. I would definitely support doing that again. You know, in terms of whether or not we need to build a library reserve now. I don't know what I feel about that. We have taken steps in the last few years to build those reserves and tackle asset management. And we can't turn the corner on many, many years of not doing that so quickly. And we've taken some pretty dramatic steps in terms of taxation over the last few years. We've, you know, assigned the cost for water and sewer. We have a fixed rate of increase every year. So I think we have done a lot of things. And if it means we can't get everywhere, like we can't build those bank accounts overnight. So we're not going to have fully funded reserves for everything we own right away. So. I think I'm ready to sort of be on a bit of a slider there. Let's. Go, I'm willing to go through the process. We've heard the things that Mr. Walsh put on the table being supported in terms of areas of specific conversation. Whether it's R C and P, the library, recreation service. Airport, I think that's probably one we really do need to tackle. But I say that with a view of ensuring that we have a successful viable airport and that might be a bit of a challenge for us. So that might be more of a cost center. The way we see it now, I can remember when it wasn't. The airport used to have a nice, healthy reserve all of its own. So we've experienced some changes. I guess in a nutshell, I'm not looking to make any cuts. We may get to that, but I've not starting there as a, you know, a philosophical starting point. And I'm prepared to hear the nuance on specific areas of service. If there's a reason. To carve back service in some areas in order to support it in others. But generally, I think I might as a as a way through. Maybe bookmark a bit of time at each of our meetings going forward to have like one of these items. Rather than trying to set a whole separate meeting schedule for discussing these items that have been raised tonight. Council Patterson put the list on the table, but perhaps as the information comes from the work that you've done with public engagement. Maybe we bite them off one at a time at a council meeting rather than, it's just an idea. Then setting a series of meetings before we get to the budget meetings. Okay, I'll stop there. Other hands, Council Elliot.
Yeah.
I I mean, we're going to see, I know we don't want to reduce service. My concern is the library and the budget that's coming. Some of the grants that are available won't be available soon enough, so. Things are going to be some hard decisions there about. But that budget is going to look like for them. I mean, I see a small increase from us. But inside the walls, if they don't get more funding, they're going to have to reduce the service and programs you're doing today. So it's something for us to think about as well when we're looking at that. Really great number of two point eight one. That Council Ray says, you know, may not be sustainable for future investment. But just spook us off going forward with through this process, so it's.
Thanks, Council Elliot. I kind of think everyone's spoken, so I'm prepared to go around again, Council Ray.
Yeah, it's just something that I forgot. The financial plan level of detail. I think I might be a bit of an outlier on council like this. I like as much detail as we can. I think it holds. A municipal staff or a provincial staff more accountable if they're looking at every line item and. You know, did I overspend my paper clips rather than, I mean, that's an example. I'm okay with an off office supply line, but but just. In the past, when we had even more detail. There was a lot of overspending and underspending and it all kind of came together and I didn't like that because I it kind of felt like. Certain things were exaggerated just so that we could. So so that we could maybe go over in some other areas and I I thought that. I've always thought that kind of reduces a level of accountability. But I do understand the reason for doing it, so we're not doing. Budget amendments all the time. So I'd be interested to know what a what a companion financial plan document. Would look like. So I'm not opposed as long as we can go into. Some other companion and say, hey, you know, I think we spent too much on paper clips.
Counselor A, there's a two kind of parts to that. The main one would be how your financial plan is. You want to keep it kind of general. So if you're moving around money a little bit, like, hey, we're human resources, our budget's this. We did go over a paper clips here, but wander and travel, so it kind of nets out. So you don't have to amendments that way. So a lot of that would be like, I normally my approach would be salaries and wages and operating expenses. And then to complement that, to give the kind of the report doing is also providing our financial reports. That would be the big one. In my budget approach, I did include a breakdown of what makes up and all the accounts of like every single line in each. Section of our financial plan. To my approach is transparency in measuring everything. And that's where I really kind of. Approaching, I've talked to Council Buchanan, Council Leonard about having financial reporting in a in a timely matter. So like I do believe I can bring, starting in Q two twenty twenty six, as we transition and against my role, my staff on that one to provide you that information, to provide more timely. Information and making decision decisions and also accountability and how we're spending taxpayer money. And the general rule of finance is if it gets measured, it gets done. So if we prepare these and provide it, you can kind of keep measuring of where things are, how things are going, and also you can catch problems sooner than later.
Thanks, and while I have the floor, because I don't think I have anything else. I I do appreciate the amount of work that you've put into this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor Ryan. Yeah, to that last point, I think. You know, we we've seen quite a few changes in our budget process in the last few years because we've had changes in the the finance department. Um, it, when I think about what our job is, we are responsible for the fiscal health of the organization. And part of our job in the system, I think, is to hear what we've heard tonight, to express concerns and ideas. Um, identify our pet areas of concern. And then we have to hand this back to the finance department. Mr. Welsh has identified things um in how he wants to manage the department going forward. And he is responsible for managing those paperclip and pens budgets through delegation through all the staff. And when we have a financial reporting mechanism that enables that to be clear to him, to through all the department heads and to him. At the end of the day, probably that's not something council's going to do. We need to set those overall budgets, make sure that we have a good team in place, I think, so I'm expressing my view on this. And that if ever we're not happy, then we can demand more depth for sure. But at the end of the day, you know what I'm seeing here, and I I remember all the Excel sheets too, and they were kind of interesting and confusing to go through. But it's the trends in here where I might say like, I don't really get that, or that's not a trend I support. I have one question afterwards. But I think for now, let's run this through when we get to the first date, January sixth. We're gonna have an idea whether or not this is working for us, and that may turn out to be a longer meeting or a shorter meeting, depending on how it all goes. But I do have one question, and it relates to something that was said here at the table. And it's just on the first, actually, I don't know what sheet it is. There was a couple of places where there were changes in salaries. Where there was a big reduction or what seemed to be a big reduction to me. That was one where I was curious if. The funds are just being realigned somehow within a department, because if we're talking about service level um maintenance, we wouldn't be. Letting people go, that wouldn't be part of the plan, and the other had to do with sort of travel and training. And I saw some reductions there, and I understand part of your thoughts were that if budgets weren't being used fully. That we're not just gonna carry a slush fund forward for years and years. I get that. However, um, I sat through this table once too, when we actually varied things to zero. It had to do with the pandemic. We took the budgets right down, and did we ever have trouble picking them up again? It was easy enough to cut, you know, a hundred thousand dollars out of a budget, and we had to put it back later. So just a caution, so I appreciate we don't want to be carrying. Money forward that's never going to be spent, but being too thin to the bone might not serve us well in the future, so. There's any, so just maybe the comment on salaries where I see those big reductions.
Um, salaries overall actually is up during a little bit. A lot of it is determining, um, it's building a wage model. Between how a lot of sellers are allocated and everything like that, and I've been working with my staff on reviewing that and kind of costing it properly. Um, a big one of that one is just was overhauling a kind of reviewing the model list and model how it was working and the allocations, and a lot of it was just. Where they're getting put between one spot or another, so this is kind of the reviewing and kind of kind of going through everything.
Okay. Good. Thank you, and thanks to Counselors Leonard and you come out, and probably to all the managers that you've been working with to get us this little piece of paper. Usually takes more than one, but certainly appreciate the work and the um, the approach that you've brought to it, so.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. All right, that was a big one. Our chief has been hanging. Oh, we have to vote. No, we didn't vote. We're not gonna do that part. Okay, it was the recommendations that are on the floor. I don't think we voted. All in favor. Any opposed? That's carried. Thanks for that catch. Okay, fourteen fourteen, what the chief has been waiting for. The Cold Response Plan Contract Award with the recommendation. Someone wants to put that on the floor, Counselor Bukama. Counselor Raven, thank you. Comments, discussion?
I appreciate staff doing this and 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 I know why they're doing it, but I I think. It's good for us to have this plan, but I think. We need to recognize that there are other agencies that should be doing this instead, and we are pursuing those. Um, Mr. Bullies. Commented at the start, it was kind of. I I kind of get it, but that's not what we have money for. That's another agency's um fault, and I and I actually. Think it's pretty weird that because we had. An overdose in the tent where the person was nice and warm and everything. We weren't able to provide a nice warm tent last year, so instead people were having overdoses in the cold. It's just a weird. Process, but I I will support this and I and I appreciate the staff taking this on.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. Counselor Raven and then Counselor Patterson.
Um, just just to bring a bit of a higher level approach to it is, I mean, if we have a power outage for forty-eight hours, and now we have seniors that, you know, they don't have. Heat in their homes, this will benefit them too, so it's not necessarily all just about vulnerable populations. It is about emergency and disaster management, so there, we can't always look at the one side of the coin, but it's just a good plan to have overall. Um, water main bursts and yeah, hydro get shut off or something happens or people can't be in their homes, where do they go even temporarily?
Thanks, Counselor Raven. Uh, Counselor Patterson.
I think your worship question through to um. Chief degrees, well, it's called you allian apologies. Um, can you speak a little bit to the comment that was made from the member of public in the scope of the plan? That would be developed and would it uh get to that level of detail of what might be required in order for us to allow individuals to be able to um shelter overnight?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Patterson. Um. The the reality at that time was um with with the funding that was available. Um, we were able to fund something that was a warming center, not an overnight sleeping location. And um, based on our requirements here for this. Um, I can honestly say I don't know exactly what what um the it's gonna look like directly. But I would suggest that um. It it's likely um. As uh Counselor Raven was alluding to as well, these these are locations for people to warm. Um, in multiple emergencies, one is underhoused environment, underhoused people. But it can also affect uh people um that have electric heating, and there's a power outage for. Uh, a long time, so it does um allow us to work on that, but it. I can't say for certain if it's gonna have overnight sleeping locations or not.
Uh, thanks, Chief, Mr. Dure.
I was just gonna follow up on Chief DeRiri's uh comments. So the intention of this is to contract a company to help support us with the development of. An extreme weather uh emergency response plan, and that does deal with numerous different scenarios. And so right now, we don't know what the outcomes of that plan will be, and that will be the intention of the exercise is looking at what are the constraints, what are the opportunities? And what direction, you know, could we take it as a as a local government in this community?
And thank you, worship, not to waste anyone's time. I think it's a little obvious. My question, I hope, is that I hope that part of their assessment would be that we would allow people the opportunity to sleep. Through the night when it's the most cold, and I just wanted to state that, sorry, it's very obvious. Thank you.
Um, but the other hands, okay. Um, recommendations on the floor, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Okay. We're at the fifteenth, we've got three months of municipal markers. Any questions? I have one, I probably won't get an answer today. It would actually be probably for Mr. Lawrence, but I noticed that um. Under the request for service, we got lots of under garbage and recycling, and I'm just curious, and if there isn't an answer tonight, that's fine. And just follow it up later. Okay, then we'll move to bylaws sixteen one. Uh, bylaw number nineteen ninety-four, if we could have um a motion for first reading, please. Counselor Bukama, still doing the name. Who are you people? Counselor Leonard, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. And second reading, please. Counselor Bukama, I remembered your name now, Counselor Leonard. Okay, and any discussion? This is for the uh, the the road dedication removal, making way for future long-term care. Not see any hands, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried, and third reading, please. Counselor Bukama, Counselor Ray. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's carried. So that went pretty fast. Thanks for the work that went into that. Uh, sixteen two, and this is for development to propose long-term care facility by law two thousand. First reading, please. Counselor Raven, Counselor Elliott, all in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Second reading, Counselor Elliott, Counselor Bukama. Any discussion? Counselor Ray.
So I'm gonna support this and the other one at second reading, but given the history of this project. And tonight's not the night to get into it, because we're already pretty late here. But before I can support third reading, this is our last chance to make sure that we get the pro- the project that was promised to us. We've had to fight pretty hard. It's been cut in half and then put back mostly because we went and advocated. Um, and there were some promises made at the start. Um, I see that that the environmental part of the snow dump. Has been taken off of our plate, but I want to make sure that it's ironclad that we're responsible for no environmental costs. Um, because that was what we offered. And that's, so um, I I'm just very well aware of that. That this is our last chance to say, hey, you know what, if we're not getting what we want, we're not gonna do the resoning. Um, so. Perhaps a report in camera, because there's a lot of questions that I have that are probably better on camera, but um sometime between. Second reading and third reading coming back to us, maybe. I I won't make the motion, but I I do have a lot of questions that I want to answer before I take the control away from us.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. Um, Mr. Dure, can we take that as direction to staff, or would you like a motion?
A motion would probably be best.
Okay, let's get through second reading, and then we'll do that. Any further comments? All in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Uh, so perhaps some motion directing staff. To schedule a closed meeting to discuss the long-term care facility and issues associated. Before third reading comes to council?
That sounds good, yes.
Okay. Are you willing to move that, Counselor Ray?
Yes.
And Counselor Patterson is seconding. Ms. McKinley, did you get it? Cool. All in favor? Any opposed, and that's carried. Okay. Okay, then we're at first reading for bylaw two thousand one. Counselor Ray, Counselor Raven, all in favor? Any opposed, and that's carried. Okay, and second reading, Counselor Bukama, Counselor Ray, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, and that's carried. And one more time, those go pretty fast. That's a lot of work to get us here, so thank you for that. Okay, we're at correspondence seventeen one. Uh, we have a letter. From Ms. Charlton regarding um the housing development at um the LB Warner site. And I'll just uh let you know that I did have um conversations and correspondence with Ms. Charlton. Leading to this, and she wanted to make sure that we understood as counsel. Uh, what her concerns were with the process and just advising that staff have also been in communication with Ms. Charlton. Over the last, I can't tell the amount of time, because this project has gone on a long time, but just acknowledging the staff were also aware and have put. Um, you know, time and interest into communicating with Ms. Charlton, although it's probably worth it for council to understand. Um, how she viewed the process and how she thinks her neigh- neighborhood is impacted. So with that. Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, worship. Just a comment on the purpose statement. I I just, this is obviously my personal opinion, but that if individuals have concerns. Um, I absolutely see that as something that, you know, I would take on um as a member of council and my sort of obligation to ensure that we're honoring process. I just. Disagree with calling out, um, you know, an individual like the the project architect or the dead, does it can't um Housing Society. And just um, you know, the statement around that this is not an objection to housing or indigenous housing, I would just say. It is because that's what's being called into question. It wasn't an assessment of um other buildings in the town of Smithers. So again, I just want to say that I own that um as a council with the town of Smithers, and I um appreciate the level of detail that was provided. In uh, ensuring that we consider process, and I guess uh my question is just. Um, through to staff, you worship, you're saying that we have had correspondence and communication, so I'm just curious. Um, you know, I recall several opportunities for public engagement or communication um around this particular project, so. Um, you know, maybe not even specifically talking about this project, but other projects. Are we feeling that that um process of engagement is still adequate? Have we ever received any other feedback that? Argues against that?
I'll just jump in before staff, when I think um this this particular project started during the pandemic. And um. What we might have considered to be first steps in public engagement were different than they might have been if not in the pandemic. Uh, it was just, it was a different time in terms of getting people into rooms. I think the first one was actually prior to the pandemic. There was a meeting in this room, so it's been a very long project that's gone through lots of changes. And I think um I would just state, you know, as someone in the neighborhood who feels as they do. And um took the time to share with us their observations, and I think I'm willing to just accept those observations. And recognize that staff have heard them too, and that staff have worked um. Hard to communicate with Ms. Charlton, and this is just an opportunity that she wanted to take to share with us at the council table. How she felt, so I think that's okay, that someone actually takes the time to do that. So I don't, I don't know that we need to take any particular action with it. She asked to share her comments, and that's what she's done. Counselor, Counselor Ray.
Yeah, I I guess that the problem with something like this coming to. Counsel on an agenda and then not answering is that there's misinformation in here that's now part of the public record. For instance, saying it's a four-story building, it's not a four-story building. I get that it has a large stance and due to its prominence on the hill, but for us to not make any comments, and I mean, it's not. I I do appreciate this person sharing their concerns, but. At a certain time, you know, like there's, this was a very complicated thing with the. Timelines involved with BC Housing, with the timelines involved with grants. I don't think that, you know, if if it had been done in a normal time, or if there hadn't been the environmental concerns. Council and therefore the public might have had even more um. Into the design. You know, there there's things in there like, did you consider townhouses? Well, we went for the maximum. Density that was allowed, and and that was a part of a public process. And that can't happen in a bunch of townhouses, so. You, I I just, I don't know, like. If anybody wants to talk to the the person that wrote this again, but I I just. I feel sometimes some of that kind of stuff can be damaging to the next project that comes along. Um, there's definitely some, a lot of um correct factual things that are also opinions that we could argue about. There is some. Good, there's some good stuff in here, and and I'll certainly probably give it a read before we go on with the next big project, but. Um, I I just. It it's difficult sometimes to just let things pass by when there's, there's a lot of. And I and I don't mean that the person is trying to spread misinformation, but it's just. Sometimes opinions become um information instead.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. Counselor Patterson.
Uh, thank you, worship. Apologies to council and staff. I recognize it's late, so um, sorry, I did want to have my question, if possible, answered by staff. The reason why I asked if we've received other um feedback from the public on the process is um just because we have a number of projects in the coming years. That we are going to be um doing, so I was just curious. Um, if maybe I'll change my question. If at any point we see a pattern or trend specific to engagement around building design. Um, my assumption is that staff would bring that forward for council uh for discussion. Is that correct? Fair assumption?
Look to Mr. Allen, Ms. Chandler. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mary Rachel. Um. Yeah, as was mentioned earlier, staff has been in contact with uh Ms. Charlton and um. And I, yeah, we've explained that all the required uh notifications were were done properly. Um, there was some unfortunate. Timing uh is, you know.
Issues with uh, this particular resident, but all the notices were were given to the neighborhood. Um, but uh, staff have taken some of this information or feedback from Ms. Charlton. To heart and are considering looking at amending like her, some of her policies in her official community plan to. Um, perhaps look at uh, requiring three D rendering of a. You know, a project of this scale and size. Um, when it's adjacent to a residential neighborhood. Um, we've even talked to. Um, B C housing on the proposed Alfred Avenue supportive housing project to do that very same. Um, process. And look at some visual impact assessments. Uh, they already have three D rendering, so it's just a matter of. Now building that in with the with the actual neighborhood. Um, I just in answer to Council Patterson's, has this uh, occurred in the past? I think for this rezoning and um, development permit. Process, we did not hear a lot of uh, negative opposition to the project at all and. There was a lot, I I think more support, especially at the rezoning stage is what I recall. Um, but yes, of course, if we're hearing any kind of trends to. Our sewer development process, we would, we would bring that forward to council, absolutely, to look at it, you know, amendments to our policies or our procedures.
Thanks, Mr. Allen.
Thank you very much, worship. Thanks.
Okay, not seeing sort of a particular response. Um, one thing I'll offer though is, you know, I I did talk with Ms. Charlton on more than one occasion. And I would have to say her approach was um, you know, in in her meetings with me. Was grounded in being kind and trying to make sure that there was a good process going forward. So. I I will acknowledge the way that she approached me. Okay. In the eighteen, anything you want to pull out? Okay, actually, I'm gonna do this another way. I'm gonna start at the beginning because otherwise I'll be going back, but anybody want eighteen one? Eighteen two. Eighteen three. Eighteen four. Eighteen five, we're gonna get to where you were, Council Ray. Eighteen six. Seven. Eight rats. Eighteen nine, there we go. And did you say eighteen ten? Okay, we got nine and ten, eleven. Okay. Eleven, I'm just gonna pull that out, twelve or thirteen. Okay, eighteen nine, was that you, Council Ray? That was you? Okay, Council Patterson.
Thank you, worship. It'll be very quick. Just to say um, I want to acknowledge, um, I know that that was a difficult decision for some of us at the table, but I think to see that. Um, there's been a significant amount of engagement with B C assessment on their approach. Um, I just want to thank um, feedback from our community and asking us to consider how we might be able to advocate on their behalf. As it seems that we weren't the only one. So I just want to thank uh, my fellow council and staff for taking the time uh, to do that because it looks like they're. Um, taking some of that feedback into consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Patterson, Council Ray.
Yes, so eighteen ten, I I wanted to acknowledge this letter. Um, and I I. I really appreciated the tone of the letter and it showed an understanding. That was also a difficult. Thing to do and I appreciated that the the chamber took the time to meet with council, uh, give us their concerns. And we're gonna move forward and it looks to me, you know, from from my point of view. That that's a very important relationship and it's, this seems like a very positive. A positive outcome where where both parties were able to move on to something and not have it affect their future relationship. So. Uh, just shout out to the chamber and and thanks for the letter.
Thanks, Council Ray. Okay. And Council Bukama.
Yeah, also uh. Relating to eighteen ten. I attended the meeting where they made this decision and I know um. Susan and Sheena were sitting around the table. It's a very difficult decision for them. And I just want to thank the chamber for their many, many years of operating the visitor center. I think the town benefited tremendously from the great job they did of operating that center year after year and. Getting tourists to. Walk down Main Street, go to local restaurants, stay in local hotels, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So. Anyway, it was a tough decision for them.
Thanks, Council Bukama. Uh, just wondering if council would like to respond. Do you want to respond in writing? Acknowledge the letter and writing. And. I just wanted to note um, eighteen eleven, we heard a lot about um, the Heritage Conservation Act. At U V C M and I talked with Mr. Dure earlier and this is already on the staff radar, so I'm prepared to just leave it there. But just, it seemed very timely that we saw here. Okay. Is that it? Do you want to pass a motion for eighteen ten? Council Bukama, Council Patterson, all in favor? Uh, that's carried. Thank you. And that was to write a letter. Okay. Are we done? Council Patterson moves that we adjourn. Is there a second or? Council Raven moves seconds. Now we're in favor, thanks.